Welcome to our board meeting. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Megan, will you call the roll?
Yes, Trustee Mezick.
Here.
Trustee Sheehan is absent. Trustee Cussera.
Here.
Trustee Lotner.
Here.
Trustee Zora.
Here.
Trustee Seidel.
Here.
President DiCipio.
Here.
A quorum is present, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, again, good evening, everyone. We have quite a few things to get through before we get to our regular agenda items. The first is a proclamation recognizing September as National Suicide Prevention Month. We have two representatives with us tonight, Ben and Johnny Boucher, and we welcome and thank you for coming, if you guys would care to come up. Let me read the proclamation, then you can say a few words there. Whereas September is already known around the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, recognizing September as the National Suicide Prevention and Action Month is intended to help promote and give attention to the suicide prevention services available to our community. Whereas the goal is to speak openly about the topic of suicide, to help erase the stigma surrounding it, and to learn how to help those around us and direct those in need to the appropriate services. Whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. Whereas according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, in 2017 alone, more than forty-seven thousand people died by suicide. Whereas suicide is the tenth leading cause of death among adults in the United States, and nearly twenty percent of all suicides were completed by people ages forty-five to fifty-four. Whereas local organizations like Suicide Prevention Services, national organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Health, Mental Illness, and international groups like Hope for the Day are all on the front lines of a battle that may still refuse to discuss as a topic of suicide and mental illness remain too uncomfortable to talk about. Whereas the Village of LaGrange Park is publicly choosing to help remove the stigma and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, pack leaders, police officers, and parents as partners in supporting our community. Whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need an occasional reminder that we are all fighting our own battles, and simply being available to one another can make a difference. Therefore be it proclaimed, the Village of LaGrange Park proclaim the month of September 2019 as Suicide Prevention and Action Month. And I'd like to thank both of you representatives for coming and speaking for us, and with that, the mic is yours. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Johnny Boucher. I'm the founder and CEO of Hope for the Day. We are a international suicide prevention and mental health education charity, but we are based here in the Chicagoland area. I grew up in the Long Grove area on the northwest side of the outskirts of the city, and I came from a place that was very much just like LaGrange Park. Beautiful streets, beautiful houses, beautiful community members, still we're struck with tragedy, and every single day that we refuse to talk about things like mental health, depression, suicide, the more we lose people. You know, that forty-seven thousand every year is not a great number to really talk about, because when you think about it, it really narrows down to about a hundred and twenty-one people plus every single day that are taking their lives, and for everyone that does complete suicide, doesn't, you know, commit suicide, when they die by suicide, they impact on average about a hundred people. And then on top of that, you think about everyone else that may have known that person and may have been impacted, but then we all get, you know, left with a, what could we have done differently? So, as a member of the community and a partner of your community, I want you to know that we are not here just to get a proclamation, we're here to truly take action, because it doesn't matter who you are, where you're from, the more we all talk about it, the more we realize that we're all going through, you know, things a little bit differently. And as our slogan is, "It's okay not to be okay," that's where it starts with, understanding that we as individuals who've been there, we can talk about it. For individuals who are going through it, we can talk about it. But silence does nothing but continue to take people out of our lives. So I thank you for the time and energy, and I look forward to bringing our program here into the wonderful place known as LaGrange Park, and also setting the example for how we as communities can be talking, you know, differently. It doesn't just have to be in our community versus another community, really, we truly are all in this together. So, thank you for your time, and with that, we're gonna leave some resource cards here that are available, they have twenty-four hour hotline numbers on them that are available nationwide. And as my boss, Mike, who we celebrate his nine years since he took his life, he, we used to work in the music industry, and he would say, "What is that concert promotion doing in our office?" And I said, "Well, it's a poster, I got them all through," and he goes, "They're not doing what we need them to do if they're in our office." And we print these things by the hundred thousand, and they go, and they help people, but they're not gonna do anything if they just sit on that bench, and that's where I'll leave them. So thank you for your time, and thank you for your commitment to talk about mental health and suicide.
Okay, next up, we have a proclamation honoring Coach White. I was invited to a groundbreaking ceremony about a month ago for Little League at Haynesworth North Park. They did a complete remodel job on the dugouts and the field, and if you haven't driven by there yet, please go to Haynesworth North and look at it, it's a beautiful field. And one of the individuals that was honored as part of the hard workers, the hard hat work, was Coach Ralph White, and he's done a lot of other things for our community, which I'll mention in our proclamation. But with that, I'd like to invite Mike, who's the president of Little League, and Coach White, would you please come up? So first of all, thank you both for being here. I know, Coach, it's tough, but whereas LaGrange Park Little League was founded in nineteen fifty-three by a group of local residents with the goal of offering an organized recreational activity to the youth of LaGrange Park. Whereas LaGrange Park Little League has been continued, has had continued success and growth due greatly to the dedication and passion of its volunteers. Whereas Coach Ralph White has selflessly dedicated over twenty-one years of his time, talent, and experience as a coach and manager, and for many years as a board member. Whereas Coach White has helped Little League grow through the years, both in enrollment and as a formidable competitor with other teams in the area. Whereas Coach White has helped countless players learn to be better pitchers, hitters, fielders, and more importantly, he has taught them skills that they can carry on and off the field, such as supporting and encouraging one another. Whereas our entire community has benefited by Coach Ralph's vision and drive to enhance the facilities at Haynesworth Park North Baseball Field. Whereas the project included demolition of existing wood dugouts, construction of new brick dugouts, addition of brick backstop and walls, new benches, furnishings, fencing, sunscreens, the creation of an engraved brick area for future memorials. Whereas Coach White tirelessly secured donations making it all possible, envisioned, planned, and sought to completion the extensive renovation. He spent innumerable hours working at the park, completing the project, often in the rain, mud, and snow, to improve the baseball experience for families and players for years to come. Therefore be it proclaimed, LaGrange Park does hereby issue this proclamation honoring Ralph White as great role model in our community, and extend our sincere appreciation for all that he has done to make our community a better place to live, and we wish him the best in the future. Coach White?
Thanks, everyone. And I went through the process, because I spent twenty-one years coaching, and I did wanna try and give something back, but it really, it's a symbol for what this community stands for. I met so many great people coaching baseball, people from the northeast side of LaGrange Park that I would have never met if it wasn't for Little League baseball. I would have went from my house to church and brought my kids to school and never went to that side of the town. So it's a symbol of community, and hopefully, you know, it keeps kids playing baseball for another hundred years, and, you know, so other people can enjoy what I did. You know, that's basically it.
So again, one of the privileges that I have when I stand up here is to introduce people in our community that have gone above and beyond, and Coach White certainly has done that, but also with the support, our Little League is one of the premier baseball leagues in the area, and a lot of it has to do with the volunteers that contribute to the everyday function of Little League, and most importantly, one of them is on the board, is the president of the board. Mike, I'd like to ask you to say a few words, and thank you for your contribution to make our community great.
It's really nice to see Ralph recognized, but really, Little League as a whole in the community. As Ralph covered, it's more than just baseball, it's part of the community that a lot of kids get to enjoy. Ralph mentioned his career of twenty-one years. Over the past five or six years, because of the efforts of the board, Little League baseball has expanded from two-hundred-and-fifty kids up to five-hundred and five-hundred-and-ten kids last year, and it keeps growing. Just in fall alone, we have three-hundred kids playing this year. It's really great, and it's great to see us being more competitive across the district and different towns and some of our neighbors, and to have those communities come in and comment on how well the program is, and that's due to the board members that we have, and the volunteers that we have, and most importantly, the players and the families. But it's really people like Ralph that make it all happen, and people like the community that allow us to succeed. So, thank you for the recognition, and thank you, President DiCipio, for a chance to speak. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. Before Mike steps down, I just came a thought. When I was at the ceremony for the dedication of this field, Little League has gone above and beyond. They had an award given to, and Mike, you're gonna have to help me out here, either it was Most Valuable Player Award, or an award given to one of the premier players in the league, and it's dedicated after one of our residents, a little kid who got to play a little bit of Little League but passed on prematurely, and I just think it's part of what our community's all about, when people like Mike and Ralph do things like this to honor residents in our community and to make it just so much special. So if you could just before, to give honor to that individual, if you could mention what that was all about?
Sure. So the award that we give out annually is the Dominic Cairo Award, and that's in memory of a child who played Little League and his career was cut dramatically short. The award is not just about playing baseball, it's about the kid who most closely exemplifies integrity in playing the game, and it's voted on by the twelve-year-olds within the league, which is really cool. So they get together and they vote for the person who is most worthy of the award, and that's the real unique piece of it. It's always really clear who the kids feel should win, and it's always a big honor, and it's something that we carry forward every year. So it's just another great thing that brings us all together, and it's part of our big tournament day over the summer. So, thanks for mentioning it, it's a great piece of Little League and something we hope to continue for many years to come.
Thank you. Okay, next we have a swearing-in ceremony of paid-on-call firefighter John Fowler. John Fowler became a paid-on-call firefighter candidate with our fire department. Welcome up, John. Right here, over by me now, come on. Right there. As fire department on July ninth, two thousand and eighteen, John served in the United States Army as a medic. His mother and father both live in the village. John attended and graduated from the College of DuPage Fire Academy and is a state-certified firefighter. He is also a state-licensed and nationally-certified EMT. Over the last year, John has also been learning about LaGrange Park Fire Department policies, standard operating guidelines, and general operations. Most recently, this past July, he successfully completed probationary testing, which includes general knowledge of policies, apparatus, and equipment, and a practical driving and pumping test. Therefore, we as a village recommend the swearing-in of John Fowler as paid-on-call firefighter for the Village of LaGrange Park. Megan, would you please do the honors in chief?
Sure. Thanks for your right to speak, and keep it after me. I, John Fowler.
Hi, John Fowler.
hereby solemnly swear.
hereby solemnly swear.
that I will uphold and defend.
uphold and defend.
the Constitution.
the Constitution.
of the United States of America.
of the United States of America.
and the Constitution.
and the Constitution.
of the State of Illinois.
the State of Illinois.
and I will faithfully carry out.
I will faithfully carry out.
all the duties.
all the duties.
imposed upon.
imposed upon.
and entrusted in me.
and entrusted in me.
as a firefighter.
as a firefighter.
of the Village of LaGrange Park.
of the Village of LaGrange Park.
As always, when we swear in a new firefighter, I'd just like to say it takes a lot of work for our paid-on-call firefighters to do this, whether they're in school, whether they have a full-time job, this is usually not their main career or their main focus in their life. And there are hours and hours of training and learning that have to take place. And again, we like that to continue through their career, but initially, when they're here, there's a lot to catch up on. John comes to us as a medic from the Army, and we greatly appreciate having his expertise with us. Now, we will say that John is gung-ho a bit, we'll call it, and as we go through the process of learning, you know, he has a lot of skills, but then they also have to be tailored to certain rules, like our EMS director tells us. So we work through all that, and that bond and that cohesiveness, as we build it, becomes an extreme asset to the department. We've had training here where we've kinda talked through a few things, and how we do it, and things like that, and John has been always willing to lend a hand. Again, sometimes it might have to pull him back a little bit, but we do appreciate, you know, what he has brought to us. Again, like all firefighters in our community, we do appreciate their dedication, the skills, the knowledge, and the time commitment that they give to us. So we do welcome John aboard, and again, congratulate him. What I would do, though, is we have a formal ceremony where we let somebody pin his badge on in LaGrange Park. We don't formally issue a badge, although, you know, for different events, they get some things they can use, so they look like firefighters, but we don't formally give them a badge until they are truly sworn in and they come off probation. So, we'd like to do that now, and John, do you have somebody here you'd like to introduce?
My father. And my father has been a resident here for thirty-plus years, I think?
If you wanna go ahead and pin that on him? Yep. You can hit him hard. There you go. Again, this signifies him completing his initial training in his introductory period, or what we call a probationary period, to where he passes a number of basic skills, basic certifications, which he had some, but which he added to with our department. And we appreciate his time again, wish him luck, and obviously, hopefully, a good future with us here.
Okay, next on the agenda. Last week, I had the privilege of going over to the Community Park District of LaGrange Park and meeting our new executive director. Jessica is certainly a breath of fresh air. She comes with a multitude of talents and ideas, so I'd like to introduce Jessica to the board and to the community. Jessica Kennedy comes to LaGrange Park from Oak Brook Park District, where she has managed the marketing, community engagement, and strategic planning efforts since two thousand and ten. During her tenure, she led an initiative that resulted in the Oak Brook Park District becoming a national gold medal agency. Jessica has served in several leadership positions within the Illinois Park and Recreation Association, including Communications and Marketing Section Director, Agency Showcase Chair, and Conference Planning Committee. Jessica has authored several published articles covering topics from using technology and communication to creating healthy communities through partnerships. She's also an artist, a photographer, and has completed murals for Hobbietown, Schaumburg, Oak Brook Park District, and several school districts. Jessica began her career in parks and recreation in two thousand and four, and since entering the field, she has received numerous awards and recognitions. We are extremely excited to welcome Jessica to our village as our Community Park District's new executive director. I'm gonna turn it over to her, we're so grateful that she's here tonight, and that she's our new executive director of our park district. Jessica.
I really wanna say thank you very, very much for this opportunity. I have been the executive director for the Community Park District of LaGrange Park now for twenty days, and I have to say, in my experience in parks and recreation, I have never been in a community that is so invested in the betterment of its residents. The history and the roots that this community has has just been inspiring, and I really look forward to working with each and every one of you, discovering what it is that this community needs so it can be its very best, and getting to work. So, thank you very much.
Okay, next up is the recognition of the Village of LaGrange Park by the American Water Works Association for seventy-five years of support, and I'd like to introduce Rick Reddy up to the mic, who's our Public Works Director.
A few months back, I received a letter in the mail from the American Water Works Association that we were gonna be receiving a pretty nostalgia award here. I would like to read the actual plaque, and then I would like to donate it to Dr. DiCipio and the president and the board here. So from the American Water Works Association, it says seventy-five years of service to the water industry, presented in two thousand and nineteen to the Village of LaGrange Park for seventy-five years of support of the programs and the goals of the American Water Works Association. So, Dr. DiCipio.
Rick, thank you. Thank you.
I'd really like to say thank you to past board and presidents and current, because without them acknowledging what we do, this would have never really been something that would have been achieved, and what we do and we take seriously, and providing the things that we do with potable drinking water, and providing some fire protection for the fire department, everything like that. So, thank you to all and all the past, so, thanks.
Thank you, Rick. I'd also like to make a few additional comments to Rick. American Water Works Association is the largest organization of water supply professionals in the world. As a village, we appreciate the support and education provided by the American Water Works Association. We are also appreciative of the association's commitment to public health, safety, and the environment. And finally, most importantly, to Rick, to you, we are proud of our village's membership and co-author to work with the society, and we are proud of the leadership that you and the Department of Public Works have provided as liaisons to this prestigious society. Thank you, Rick. Okay, next up, we have public participation of agenda-related items only, would anyone care to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Megan?
Thank you, Mr. President. The items on this evening's consent agenda are as follows. A, approval of minutes. One, village board meeting July twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen. Two, work session meeting August thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Three, executive session meeting August thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen. B, action. Lexi Paul Policy Manual, motion, one, to authorize staff to accept the agreement between Lexi Paul and LaGrange Park Police Department, and two, to authorize the chief of police to execute the agreement document. C, action. Purchase of two Wassa Snow Plows, excuse me, motion to authorize staff to purchase two Wassa Snow Plows from Linco Equipment Sales for twenty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. D, action. Enterprise Resource Planning System, motion, one, to approve the purchase of Enterprise Resource Planning software from V S and A Software, Inc., for a not-to-exceed amount of two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and authorize the village manager to sign the required contracts. Motion, two, to approve the purchase of the required server and installation costs from All Information Services, Inc., for a not-to-exceed amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. E, action. Motion to authorize the president and the chairperson of the finance committee to sign the register for bills, and authorize the treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in payment of operating bills and salaries as itemized in the check registers. F, action. Motion to authorize the village treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in the payment of payroll and other bills that become due between this date and September twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, with subsequent approval of the payroll register and voucher register by the Board of Trustees at its regular meeting to be held on September twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as reported.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Megan, call the roll.
Trustee Mezick.
Yes.
Trustee Cussera.
Yes.
Trustee Lotner.
Yes.
Trustee Zora.
Yes.
Trustee Seidel.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan. Next up is village managers' report. Julia?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I have just one item to report this evening. This is something I reported on briefly at the work session, and I think it's worth mentioning again, and that is a big thank you and kudos to Chief Kontoyes and the members of the police department for a very successful national night out event. It was our most successful event to date. We had well over a thousand attendees. Any take on how many? Okay, okay, so we, it was a very successful event. We had a lot of new elements to this year's event that made it very special. We very much integrated the fire department and the public works departments in terms of elements of education and public safety. That was fantastic. We had an outstanding number of volunteers who helped out with the event. We had an outstanding number of employees and village personnel that attended the event that was wonderful as well. So much to offer in that evening, and it all came to an end with a fantastic laser light show, and when it was all said and done, the police department and the event raised over a thousand dollars for the Illinois Special Olympics. So I think that made it just a very special event, and really understated the importance, underlined the importance of community involvement and public safety, and how we help out others in our community. So I'd like to make mention of that. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Congratulations also to Sergeant Fellers. He did a great job emceeing and hosting the event. He really kept all of us on our toes, so please extend that thank you to him as well. And that is all I have to report this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julia. Okay, moving on to administration committee. Trustee Seidel?
I have three items on the administration report. Coffee with the chief. On Wednesday, August 28, the police department will host Coffee with the Chief. Residents will have the opportunity to meet the village's new police chief, Tim Kontoyes, and other La Grange Park police officers. Please join us for an informal public forum to learn about timely public safety issues and ask any questions you may have. And it is 7:00 to 8:00 at Plymouth Place in the Grand Ballroom on Wednesday, August 28. Citizen Police Academy. La Grange Park Citizens Police Academy is a free five-week program designed to give participants a working knowledge of the La Grange Park Police Department and all the services available. The goal is to provide for a safer community by utilizing education in order to enhance understanding, increase positive communication, and foster a partnership between citizens and the police department. The academy is a series of classes, discussions, and demonstrations of the operations and divisions of the La Grange Park Police Department. Participants must be 18 years of age. Enrollment is open to all, with priority given to La Grange Park residents and those who work in the village. Classes are scheduled for each Thursday from September 12 through October 10, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. Questions should be directed to Officer Chris Dempsey at cdemsey@lagrangepark.org. Community e-briefs. The village would like to encourage residents to stay connected with what is happening in La Grange Park by signing up for Community e-briefs, our weekly electronic newsletter that is emailed out each Friday. The village currently has over 2,100 subscribers. Residents may sign up for e-briefs by going to the homepage of the village's website, The next item is regarding recreational adult-use cannabis businesses. I'm going to summarize this memo a bit. So, the village board agenda memo in its entirety is available on the village website. The background, on June 25, 2019, Governor Pritzker signed into law House Bill 1438, which allows the consumption of cannabis for non-medical purposes, Public Act 101-0027. Illinois became the 11th state in the country to legalize the recreational use and purchase of cannabis. Starting January 1, 2020, adult 21 and older will be able to legally purchase cannabis for recreational use from licensed adult-use dispensaries across the state. Under the new law, dispensaries are eligible to receive their licenses by May 1, 2020, while processors, growers, and transporters are eligible by July 1. The new law will allow an Illinois adult aged 21 and older to possess up to 30 grams of cannabis. Those using cannabis for medical purposes would be allowed to grow it at home, although recreational users are still prohibited from homegrowing. Personal cannabis use will be allowed in most private residence, but not in prohibited areas, including any public place or in close physical proximity to underage persons. Under the act, no unit of local government may unreasonably prohibit the use of cannabis within their boundaries. However, the act does allow local governments to ban or significantly limit cannabis businesses in their jurisdiction, including dispensaries, cultivation centers, craft growers, processing organizations, and transportation organizations. The new law does not impose a time limit or require a referendum to adopt these restrictions. Over the next few months, Illinois communities will decide whether they would like to opt out, as allowed by the act. By opting out, communities are prohibiting recreational cannabis businesses and therefore not allowing the cultivation, processing, transportation, and dispensing of recreational cannabis within their community. For communities that decide to not opt out or allow these businesses, various changes within the zoning and village code should be made prior to January 1, 2020. The considerations are state licensing for dispensaries. Adult-use dispensaries will be licensed by the Department of Financial and Professional Regulation to acquire cannabis from a cultivation center, craft grower, processing organization, or another dispensary for the purpose of selling cannabis or cannabis products. Dispensaries are not allowed to have a drive-through windows, vending machines, nor are they allowed to transport, deliver cannabis to residents or other locations. Under the act, adult-use dispensaries are allowed to operate between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. Next consideration is zoning. The new act allows for local ordinance as rules governing the time, place, matter, and number of cannabis businesses consistent with the act. The act grants local government broad authority to authorize and regulate privately-owned facilities where cannabis and cannabis products may be consumed on-site, similar to hookah lounges. Under the act, a state-issued cannabis establishment license will be denied if the applicant would not be in compliance with local zoning rules. In addition, a local government may establish civil penalties for a violation of an ordinance or regulations governing the time, place, and manner of the operation of a cannabis establishment. Next consideration is revenue. Under the act, sales will be taxed by the state at 10% for THC levels at or less than 35%, 20% for cannabis-infused products such as edibles, and 25% for THC concentrations more than 35%. The Cannabis Regulation Fund will transfer 8% of the state tax revenue to the local government distribution fund earmarked to fund crime prevention programs, training, and interdiction efforts, including detention enforcement and prevention efforts relating to the illegal cannabis market and driving under the influence of cannabis. Next considerations, law enforcement. The act provides municipalities with the authority to locally regulate possession and consumption of cannabis by citizens as long as it's consistent with the act. As such, local governments can adopt the prohibitions and penalties of the act into their codes, which will enable the enforcement, prosecution of personal possession and consumption violations through local adjudication or the circuit court. The next steps, the village should discuss whether they will allow cannabis businesses within our jurisdiction. The act allows local governments to ban or significantly limit cannabis businesses in their jurisdiction, including dispensaries, cultivation centers, craft growers, processing organizations, and transportation organizations. The village board approves an ordinance to prohibit cannabis businesses in La Grange Park. The village may wish to consider a text amendment in the zoning code to make clear that these businesses are prohibited in every zoning district. So, this item is for discussion and action tonight. The motion is to, the motion to approve an ordinance amending, sorry, motion to approve an ordinance amending title of the La Grange Park Municipal Code, amending Chapter 117 and prohibiting cannabis business establishments.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second? Okay, discussion. Trustee Seidel?
We have discussed this before. We have had residents speak. The staff has done their due diligence and a lot of research. I think we have all done our own research, and I am still in agreement that at this time, we should opt out and not allow this in our village.
Trustee Cussera?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of brief comments, and very much agree with discussion. And trustee Seidel, next to me. In talking to a lot of folks, I think a big important thing is our business community is not in favor, not in favor of having the dispensaries. In addition to residents, I think they're one of, by far, the largest stakeholders. I think it'd be hard to be a business and have somebody looking it up properly, at least next to mine. Secondly, we had a lot of great public comment on revenue. I really don't think this is a revenue agenda item. In fact, very interesting, when the state of Illinois passed it, everybody thought it was the revenue side, but really, the last day of debate came from more or less the people that recreationally wanted it. And you lasted the last meeting, challenged us, Mr. President. We can find innovative ways to come up with revenue. A lot of reports pro and client, pro and against crime. I'm not going to discuss that, but with the three things that I talked about, I really just don't believe that La Grange Park and our board want to take a chance at this stage of the new law for all stakeholders involved. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, trustee Cussera. Trustee Mezick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also concur with my fellow trustees so far. To not be redundant, yes, the impact on the business community. Every resident I talked to, other than the ones that spoke here, said no. So I also consider very much the feeling that people that I talked to, we had a few emails, and it was kind of split. If we looked strictly at revenue, and I agree, what is the character of our town? How does this affect us? That is something I take very seriously. I think, again, we can, as trustee Cussera said, and you challenged us, we can find better ways for revenue. We don't know the impacts on law enforcement at this point. And again, I just think it goes to the character of the community, and I would support opting out.
Thank you, trustee Mezick. Trustee Zora?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I don't want to repeat what everyone else has said. I also don't think this fits in with our community. Again, I feel like medical marijuana is a different story, but that's not what we're discussing here. And I also want to remind everyone that this decision can be overturned if, for some reason, we decide it's not right. But I would vote in opting out at this time, too.
Thank you, trustee Zora. Trustee Lotner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've given a lot of thought to this, as I know that my fellow trustees have as well. And I think I mentioned the last time, looking at it in two different aspects, the legal aspect as well as the social aspect. It has become law. Of course, part of that law is the opportunity for municipalities to opt out. I think the bigger impact, of course, is the social aspect of this. And as trustee Mezick mentioned, the character of the village. And, you know, everyone in this room and everyone watching this evening, I would say, over the course of their lives, have been inundated with advertisements, media campaigns, directed at the problems with drugs and, you know, the warnings against, you know, the gateway drugs. And we all have received just a wealth of information here that provide, well, what of that is not correct and what is correct. And there's pros and cons either way, and multiple versions of the truth, as I refer to it. And I think that's yet to be determined. Like I said, we have education, we have information. I think what we need now is experience. I think we need to step back and observe what is going on in other villages as this becomes an effective law as of the 1st of next year. And I think from that, we can gauge, you know, I think our society is changing. There's no question about it. But I think a lot of the things that have been key attributes that have drawn people to this village, our younger population, our older population, to stay around, self-included, I think that the character that has been built is a very critical part. Quite honestly, I see it very similar in some ways to the Memorial Park issue that we had several years ago. And the connection that I see there is, there was a huge public outcry regarding the potential for changing something that we all, as a community, had felt was a very important aspect of La Grange Park. And considering the possibility of now, because of a revenue-starved state, that has now provided the opportunity for the use of a drug, I think now has potentially set up for changing the character of this village and others. So, I think we have to take a wait-and-see attitude. As far as the revenue that's going on and that's being promised, it's interesting to me that about 30% of that revenue is for mental health programs, for training of our law enforcement officers, a lot of aspects that you would think, well, why are we doing this, then? But it is. We are doing it. It is law, I understand that. But I think that we need to get smarter about how is this all going to lay out as we go forward. It certainly would be a lot easier to opt out now, as I support, and potentially change in the future, if that becomes appropriate, versus opting in now and then trying to back it out, when we discover that it's more of a problem than we think it is. The revenue promises that seem to be made after all of the administrative costs are covered, after all the expungement costs are covered, then some revenue can flow to the communities. And as recent as this week, I think the state actually came out and warned, or at least requested, that the 3.5% that the municipalities could apply was requested that that not be applied, at least for five years, until they can get the program established. So, I'm also not interested in supporting the startup cost of this program. So, I apologize for the long narration, but I would opt out at this point.
Thank you, trustee Lotner. I do respect all the opinions of our board, and I think we have a great board here. I do respect the diverse opinions and maybe conflicting opinions of some of our residents that came out to speak. We look at all revenue streams, we look at all businesses that come in. If you look at our zoning code, there are businesses and things that we don't allow in our community. It's not a one-for-all and all-for-one. We do have restrictions in our zoning code of certain businesses that we won't allow. If we take a knee-jerk response and look at the financial gain and look at the money only, I think we're doing a disservice to our community. I think this board has shown tact, responsibility, courage, leadership by utmost. There are some communities out there that are going to go to referendum. There are some communities that are passing it on to other committees of the board. This board has elected to take it upon themselves, and at this point in time, and who knows what tomorrow may bring, decide to opt out and see where the chips may fall. Now, I'm going to get on my bandwagon a little bit here, because it bothers me sometimes when our board is critiqued, because these individuals up here put a lot of time into what they do here. We have a great community, it's run very efficiently, we have a great staff, and it just doesn't happen. There's a lot of work that goes into this. If we were looking at the financial rewards that could potentially possibly be from recreational marijuana businesses in our community, sure, but it goes into more than that. We have the leadership of the board, we have the ethics of our community, we have the value in our community, we have what our community stands for. This board is anything but stupid, regressive, or cowardly. It really offends me that people would go to that extent to say things about the elected officials up here that give their time and effort and blood to this community. Some of the folks that spoke had a financial interest in what they were saying. And I can understand that, certainly. If I had, if I, I'm a general dentist by trade, if I want to put a dental office in the community, I'm going to go up there and speak that I want a dental office here. So I appreciate it, but it's more than that. There's a lot more into it than that. We have our children, we have the perception of our community. If we were going to make, again, a knee-jerk response, we would have jumped right into it. This board is not all about knee-jerk responses. They value what they put out there, and they hold responsible what they put out there. So I commend each and every one of you for doing your due diligence and being leaders, being leaders not only in our community, but in our area. So, Megan, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Trustee Mezick?
Yes.
Trustee Cussera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan. And thank you, trustee Seidel. Okay, moving on, building and zoning committee. Trustee Zora?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to report the building department activities for July of 2019. Eighty-seven building permits were issued compared to 93 last July. Four hundred and sixty-eight permits were issued due to date compared to 597, the same period of last year. Estimated construction costs were up 42% for the month compared to last July. Permit fees collected were 27% compared to last July. One hundred and thirty-three inspections were conducted, six were not approved. A great amount of progress has been made at the Park Home Shopping Center during the month, including work beginning on the replacement of a large portion of the roof, interior plumbing, and the permit approval was given for the new water main and sewer improvements. The photovoltaic project for the CSJ was completed and received final inspections and approvals. and approvals. The existing I building has an array of 34 panels on the roof, and the new carport on the west side of parking area was constructed using another array. Staff met Plymouth Place regarding a planned remodel of the café at the lower level, the bistro. Final building and fire inspections were approved for the new Montessori Children's Community at 1905 East 31st Street. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Zora. Engineering Capital Projects Committee, Trustee Cussera?
Thank you, Mr. President. The contractor for 2019 street paving program, J. Nardoli Concrete, has continued progress on the project. The first of two layers of asphalt have been placed on the 700 and 800 blocks of Loyola, 700 block of Spring, Jackson, from LaGrange Road to Barnesdale Road, and Brewster from Spring Avenue to LaGrange Road. Driveways disturbed by curb removal have been replaced, and all public sidewalk at the intersections have been brought into full compliance with current ADA requirements. This initial group of streets included the areas adjacent to schools in order to minimize the disruption to students and residents. The work focus will shift to the second group of streets in August. All construction activities on the project, including landscape restoration, are expected to be completed by late fall. Work on the Raymond Avenue Water Main Replacing Project is almost half-completed. The contractor, Suburban General Construction, is installing water main north of 29th Street and water services south of 29th Street. Major construction activities in front of St. Louis de Merelac and Brook Park Schools will be completed by mid-August in order to reduce the inconvenience and disruption to the area from the construction. The balance of the work will be completed by mid-September with landscape restoration occurring when weather conditions moderate. Unique Plumbing has completed work on the 2019 sewer repair project. Last item this evening is design of the 2019 ally improvement in Oste Street Parking Projects is nearly complete. The alleys between Raymond Avenue and Lima Avenue just north of 31st Street will be reconstructed in concrete, and new public parking spaces will be built on the west side of Beach Avenue north of 31st Street. Staff met on-site to review options and design considerations. The new parking stalls will be built using a decorative stamped and colored concrete design. This project is scheduled to be bid in August with construction beginning in September. This project will be completed this construction season. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Cussera. Public Safety Committee, Trustee Lotner?
Thank you, Mr. President. From the Police Department area, over the course of last month in July, the total number of crimes this year is slightly higher than last year at this time, with 184 reported this year compared to 159 last year. Traffic enforcement is at 2,748 total tickets issued through July of 2019. Overall, police activity, however, is slightly lower to last year with 5,070 total incidents reported through July of 2019 as compared to 5,790 total incidents through July of 2018. Mark your calendars and do not miss out on the upcoming Police Department special events that includes, first of all, the Citizens Police Academy, which is scheduled for Thursday evenings, September 12 through October 10, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. in the Village Boardroom. Please contact Officer Chris Dempsey at 708-352-7711, extension 275, for further information on this great program. You may pick up applications at the Police Department window during normal business hours. And I'd like to add to that, that a few of us in the room have taken advantage of that, and it's a great program, and I encourage all of our residents in the community to come and learn what our police officers really do on a day-in-and-day-out basis and the type of training that they have to be effective in their jobs. Second item is the Coffee with the Chief and Staff on Wednesday, August 28, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Plymouth Place. And please note that there's a change of date from August 21st. So the new date is August 28, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Plymouth Place. And, as always, a friendly reminder about securing one's personal property at all times. Please lock your vehicles and your residences, especially during overnight hours. If you're going on vacation, please come into the Police Department between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and fill out a vacation watch card. When you return home, please come by, let the Police Department know that you're home, and you'll receive your card back with the times that they actually came by to check your house. Please contact me if you have any, well, please contact Tim Conteis, our chief, if you have any questions and need additional information. And regarding the Fire Department, over the course of last month, EMS incidents this month were 146, and year-to-date, there have been 738 as compared to 805 year-to-date in 2018. Fire and rescue incidents this month totaled 52. There have been 340 year-to-date compared to 258 year-to-date in 2018. A new powered stretcher purchased for our second ambulance was delivered and placed in service. Training continued throughout the month on Rescue Task Force and Active Threat Incidents, with three days of training provided to Fire and Police Department in our MABUS Division. Personnel participated in the Independence Day parades in Riverside, Brookfield, and Lyons. Most of the prep work was completed, and our new duty officer SUV was placed into service. Hazmat training took place on a new handheld chemical identifier device that our Hazmat Response Team was provided. It was provided by the Illinois MABUS through UASI Urban Area Security Initiative, Homeland Security Funding. There were nine personnel attended a Stop the Bleed training at the LaGrange Fire Department, which was provided by the Loyola EMS system in conjunction with Adventist LaGrange Hospital. And staff met on-site throughout the month, again, at Congregation of St. Joseph to follow-up on inspection and testing, and a couple of critical items related to completion of their fire suppression systems. Two noteworthy items: On the 16th of July, in the afternoon, response to the multiple 10 office building at 48 East 31st Street was an activated fire alarm. Upon arrival, it was discovered that an autoclave in the dentist's office malfunctioned, and the contents inside began overheating. There's probably only a few people in the room that know what an autoclave is. Is that right, Dr. DiCipio? The problem was caught and isolated by staff, but the Fire Department assisted with using our fans to ventilate the offices. And the second item was on the 26th of July, in the evening, in response to a vehicle crash at 31st Street and LaGrange Road, and due to the amount of patients and injuries, a MABUS box alarm was requested, bringing us four additional ambulances and additional equipment. Total of four patients were transported to area hospitals. And that concludes my report from the Public Safety area this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Lotner. Public Works Committee, in lieu of Trustee Sheehan not being available, Trustee Messick, would you please do the report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Works Activities for July of 2019. The Village Brush Collection continued the first full week of July and carried over a couple of days due to the Fourth of July holiday. Multiple crews spent 120 hours making multiple passes through town collecting brush piles. Nearly 189 cubic yards of brush were collected. DPW installed the new board-approved meter in the rear of Plymouth Place the last day of July. The 10-inch Badger Record All FSAA meter has the capabilities of capturing low flows of water passing through compared to the meter removed. With the newer low-flow features installed in buildings and updates to plumbing codes, this new Badger meter has features to capture the data and revenue we are looking for. Multiple water service lines were replaced during road construction areas due to leaks. All the village-owned sections of these lines have been replaced with copper, and fittings and taps have been replaced with lead-free brass to meet industry standards. Public Works picked up their new pickup truck this month. The new GMC 2500 has been outfitted with front and rear strobes, rear light bar, and tracer lights along the running boards. The truck has a new western eight-foot snowplow. Street sweeping continued, spending 48 day-shift hours cleaning 118 miles of roadway. Thirty-one yards of debris were collected, making multiple passes through town. The street sweeper was taken to standard equipment in Chicago to get repairs from normal wear and tear. We are expecting to have it returned towards mid-August to once again keep our streets clean. Hydrant flushing is nearly wrapped up on the east side of town and will then continue on the west side to complete the program. Tree maintenance in July, spent 77 hours inspecting, planting, trimming, and removing dead or hazardous trees. Crews were out filling potholes throughout the town and finished multiple asphalt passes from water and sewer evacuations. Ninety daytime hours were spent on these patches using nearly a combined 30 tons of surface mix and cold mix. 144 day-shift hours were spent on building and ground maintenance around the Public Works facility, Village Hall, and along 31st Street. 97.5 day-shift hours were spent in June on the maintenance of Public Works equipment and vehicles. Work orders were completed with crews removing roadkill, making sign repairs, and attending to resident concerns. There was a bunch of Public Works police vehicles and fire vehicle equipment maintenance that had happened over the month of July, and then now on to water department operations. Over 433 day-shift hours and 58.75 overtime man-hours during the month of July were spent on the maintenance and repairs of sewer and water mains. 34,990 gallons of water were purchased from the Brookfield North Riverside Water Commission. 1,281 water meters were read in Section 1. 55 monthly accounts and 28 final meter readings were taken. Various inspections, appointments, and service calls were performed, and one water sewer inspection, five meter appointments, and 25 service calls were performed. And that concludes the monthly report for July, and there is one action item. All right. The sale of surplus vehicles and equipment. Over the years, the Public Works Department has purchased newer vehicles and/or equipment, and the vehicles and equipment they were replacing were never sold. I would like to declare these surplus and market them for sale, either through the direct competitive bidding, a vehicle auction site, or similar process, following as information on the vehicles' equipment determined to be surplus. One 1996 GMC Sierra 3500 with plow, a 1993 Chevrolet 2500 with plow, 2002 Freightliner Sweeper, a 1994 Vermeer Wood Chipper, police speed radar trailer, a 2007 Ford Crown Victoria, and a 2006 Ford Crown Victoria, trailer with tar kettle, air oil products, and asphalt hot box. So the discussion is on the sale and action of vehicles, and the motion is to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of surplus property owned by the Village of LaGrange Park.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Trustee Messick?
It all looks very logical to see if we can monetize a little bit of these surplus vehicles, and my gosh, you guys do a good job of maintaining them, because some of the stuff's older than half of my kids.
Director Addy, any comments?
Yeah, we need the verge. We need some space. So this is, it's been there for a while, so I guess it's been there for a while.
Great, thank you. Any comments from the board? Megan, call the roll.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Cussera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
And that concludes Public Works, Mr. President.
And thank you, Trustee Messick. Finance Committee, moving on, Trustee Messick?
All right, and now for the monthly report, finance as of July 31, 2019. Fiscal year-to-date, general fund revenue is at 26% of the annual budget and about $317,000 lower than the prior year. The decrease is primarily due to later property tax distributions from the county compared to last year. Permit revenue was greater in the prior year by approximately $75,000 due to a large permit issued for the Sisters of St. Joseph Project. Intergovernmental revenue is up over $118,000 compared to last year due to increased state shared revenue receipts. The state income tax performed much better than originally projected in April, likely due to federal tax reform. Charges for services is down about $13,000 due primarily to lower ambulance fee receipts compared to last year. Fine revenue is approximately $20,000 lower than the prior year. A large court fee receipt was received early last year, and local debt recovery receipts are expected to increase with the implementation of the new ticket software system. Total general fund expenditures are within expectations at 22% of the annual budget and about $64,000 greater than last year. And that concludes the finance report. There are no action items.
Thank you, Trustee Messick. Moving on to other reports, Village Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Our Village Treasurer?
No report tonight, Mr. President.
Our Village Engineer?
No report, Mr. President.
Our Village Attorney?
No report, Mr. President.
And Commercial Revitalization Committee, Trustee Cussera?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just lost my page.
This evening, I have four items to report on, Mr. President. Progress at the 711 Strip Center continues. The exterior water service line has been replaced, and the interior fire sprinkler system installation will be completed within the next few weeks. The build-out plans for both Rosati's and Enos are under review. Second item, staff is finalizing design of the north Beach Avenue parking lot to be constructed in the right-of-way on the west side of Beach Avenue north of 31st Street. Third item, in the coming weeks, Jullosco will be repaving the surface drive behind their building and a portion of their parking lot. The final item, Mr. President, the Village Business Resource Guide has been updated as part of the reintroduction of the business outreach program. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Cussera. Okay, I have two items to discuss. First is the appointment to the Youth Commission. Village currently has two vacancies to fill on the Youth Commission due to the recent graduation of one member and the replacement of one member. The Village recently received four applications based on their community involvement and interest in serving on the Youth Commission. I recommend the following candidates to serve on the Commission. Charlotte Sands, sophomore at Lyons Township High School for a term of two years. Sophia Lazarsky, a senior at Lyons Township High School for a term of one year. In addition, three existing members of the Commission, Jacob Myers, William Akins, and Jackson Chaddish, have terms that will expire on September 1, 2019. As all three members attend regularly and contribute to the meetings, I recommend they each be reappointed for a two-year term to expire on September 1, 2021. Trustee Lotner, would you please make the motion?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to submit a motion to appoint new Ms. Charlotte Sands to the Village of LaGrange Park Youth Commission for a term to expire on September 1, 2021, and to appoint Ms. Sophia Lazarsky to fill an unexpired term for one year to expire on September 1, 2020.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? We all went through this at our executive session, so Megan, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Cussera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan. Continue, Trustee Lotner.
I'd also like to submit a motion to reappoint Jacob Myers, William Akins, and Jackson Chaddish to the Village of LaGrange Park Youth Commission for terms to expire on September 1, 2021.
Motion, I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Again, we discussed this at our executive session. Megan, call the roll, please.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Cussera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you, Trustee Lotner. Okay, I have one other item, and it's a, I don't normally announce activities that occur in the Village. Those go on our website and in our board briefs. But I do have one item that was brought to my attention that I think is very valuable to our community, and that's the Max Strong Neighborhood Fundraiser. I wanted to make mention of the Max Strong Neighborhood Fundraiser. For the last nine years, area neighbors have been hosting a free afternoon picnic fundraiser at Stone Monroe Park in LaGrange Park on the Saturday of Labor Day weekend. This event is happening this Saturday, August 31, at noon. There will be a barbecue cookout, games, raffles, refreshments, and live music. All that is being requested is a donation for the cause. Here's the great part. This year, the Stone Monroe neighbors are hosting the fundraiser for Mackenzie Ludolf Kuclaw, a 2019 graduate of Park Junior High. Mackenzie was recently diagnosed with acute myeloid leukemia shortly before her eighth grade graduation from Park Junior High. Since June 1, 2019, Mackenzie has been a warrior in her fight against cancer. She has undergone numerous surgeries, chemotherapy, and dozens of procedures. Mackenzie's family has been with her every step of the way. The event is an opportunity to help Mackenzie's family with this fight. Any support in the form of a donation would be greatly appreciated, so folks are encouraged to stop by and have a burger, listen to some great music, and donate to a great cause. This is a great cause, and again, this is the fabric of our community, so I encourage everyone to, it's available to stop by, support Mackenzie in her efforts to fight this terrible disease. to fight this terrible disease, and show what kind of community that we have. Public participation of non-agenda-related items. Anyone care to address the board? Any new business? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.